fourteen twenty twenty three.
So moved.
Motion by trustee Kane, seconded by trustee Plum. All those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? So carried. Motion to approve the minutes from the special meeting held on November twenty eighth, twenty twenty three.
I'll move it.
Motion by deputy mayor Hay.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Kane. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Hello, trustee Corish. Thank you for joining us. Welcome.
Thank you.
So carried. Motion to approve the minutes from the special meeting held on December first, twenty twenty three.
I'll move it.
Motion by deputy mayor Hay, second.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Kane. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed? So carried. That brings us to the treasurer's report. Charles, would you?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Let me start by saying that the village's financials remain in a very strong position. We see that we're well, you know, in good shape. We continue to keep it in that direction. Our second half taxes were due on November first. So in the last month, we've seen very strong cash inflows, about two and a half million dollars. Very positive. You know, it's also important because this time of year, the move into the off season, our income from docks, parking fees, and even the justice court applies significantly. So things like the timing of the tax inflows, plus also we recently billed in September sewer fees, the annual and the quarterly sewer fees, we're collecting those now in October or November, helping us through this period. In addition, I mentioned last month, the interest income continues to be very good on our invested cash. So that's about one hundred and fifty thousand ahead of last year. We're getting on average on our money market and other funds about five percent. So we're in good shape. Expense side, things are pretty much in line with budget. Major expenditures for the past month where I think we're finishing up with Chester Fields, one final payment there, and then for the transient docks, and then also we made a principal and interest payment on some of our debt as scheduled. So all routine and in line with budget. The only other thing I have is over the next couple of weeks, I'll be reaching out to each of you to discuss our budgeting process. You know, we're going to start the process for the new fiscal year budget, even though the fiscal year starts in June, we start now kind of collecting the data, collecting feedback from each of you and the department heads, and work towards a May first approval of the budget. So I'll be reaching out to discuss that. And that's it.
Any questions for the treasurer? Motion to accept the treasurer's report?
I'll move it.
Motion by deputy mayor Hay, second.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Kane. All those in favor?
Hi. Hi.
Thank you. So carried. That brings us to our department committee reports, and I will begin with the police department, fire department, and ambulance corps. So the police department Sag Harbor Village Police Department report for November twenty twenty three, I have six hundred and sixty four calls for service. We had five aggravated unlicensed. We had seventeen motor vehicle accidents, which is a little high for November. We had five arrests. We've had one hundred and twenty four arrests up to this time this year. So with one more month left, we're at one hundred and twenty four for the year. And we had sixty six uniform traffic tickets that were issued. Just wanted to say, mention that lieutenant Drake is here and present at this meeting and is now acting as our chief of police. So welcome lieutenant Drake. So that concludes the police department report. That'll bring me to the fire department. In the month of November twenty twenty three, the fire department volunteered for nine hundred and forty nine man hours. During the month, the officers and members of the department responded to fifty four calls for service. These calls included two mutual aids to neighboring departments for structure fires, two oven fires, two calls for issues with fireplaces, and there were numerous false alarms. During the month of November, the fire department members continued training with two drills at the Suffolk County Fire Academy. The first was a combined Class A drill with Shelter Island and Greenport, and the second was a vehicle fire drill. Finally, the members kicked off the holiday season by attending Southampton's Parade of Lights, where they decorated a fire truck to resemble the Polar Express. So that's our report from our first assistant chief, Michael Guyer, which brings me to the ambulance corps. In the month of November twenty twenty three, the ambulance responded to sixty one emergency calls. There were four work nights, two meetings, nine training sessions, for a total of eight hundred and seventy two man hours. And that concludes the reports for police, fire, and ambulance corps. So now we'll turn to deputy mayor Hay for the parks, open spaces, justice court, and planning board.
Thank you, mayor. I'll start with the justice court. In November, we had sixty nine cases open and eighty four closed on average. They're about one and a half charges per defendant. So we're through November now, or we have data through November, and what we've seen is that through November, we had six thousand two hundred and eighteen cases in the justice court, which is back to the levels of twenty nineteen and twenty twenty one. Twenty twenty COVID year dropped off dramatically. Twenty twenty two had dropped off some too. Vehicle traffic violations for this eleventh month period is nine hundred and thirty two, criminal thirty four, code violations eleven, civil actions and small claims ten, and parking is the majority of the cases, five thousand two hundred and thirty one, which is back to the two thousand nineteen levels. Thank you again to the TCOs and the police department for that pickup again for this year. The revenues collected through November is total revenues is about four hundred and seventy thousand, about three hundred and five thousand will come to the village after New York State takes its piece. So with one month left in the year, the collections exceed twenty twenty two and twenty twenty, but they're still running behind, you know, what are our peak years, which were two thousand seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, and twenty one. Next reports on the parks and open space advisory committee. Post-act charge from this board is among other things to assist the mayor and board in coordinating studies, analyzing open spaces, reviewing proposals, and advising on parks and open space issues. Several members of the committee are here tonight. One member is traveling at Hollander. And I'm going to turn it over now to John Shaka, Bailey Briggs, and lieutenant Drake to present a conceptual plan to the board for consideration.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Playing word. I'll let you listen to yourself.
Lieutenant from Sag Harbor Village.
With Hollander.
Yes.
Who's not here tonight. So thank you for having us here tonight. As trustee Hay said, we've been working on this for a few months gathering on a regular basis and talking through some of the issues that are pertinent to the issues right in front of us here. Since we're collaborated in a post act charter, just trustee Hay mentioned we have to review and evaluate parks and open spaces. That's true, as well as investigating, analyzing, opportunity, and accessibility to better connect open spaces. And that's key tonight because we're talking about a piece tonight, which is a little different from what you'd normally think about as open space. Normally, you think about the parks, say, Havens Beach to the east, going to bring, going to leave Long Wharf, Steinbeck Park, and if you're thinking ahead to the future, you might think about what will happen to that silly farm park in the future. Not a lot has happened there yet. We will talk about those eventually, but tonight we're focusing actually on part of the piece in between, which is as important. What we need to do as well is come back and report to you on a regular basis, but before we do, we need to consult the documents that are out there already. LWRP, water volume improvement project plan, all the things that are guiding documents that are already in the, that we have. So I'm going to be trying to be swift tonight, so if we go too quickly, come back and ask his questions later on. I'm going to read a little bit so I get things correct, if you don't mind. Tonight, POSAC is bringing to the village board and the public a conceptual design, and I emphasize conceptual, for the open space along West Water Street and Long Island Avenue. Thank you. Bailey knows I didn't. Clearly, I did not. Okay, so you know this area. It's where, it's where West Water Street comes down, Long Island Avenue meets it sort of at a point, opposite Beacon Restaurant, more or less. That's the space we're talking about, the whole, the whole area of that. What you're seeing there is their conceptual plan as opposed to what they're presenting. But several aspects of the space are of interest and important to us, including vehicle, pedestrian, and cycling usage through the area, waterfront and marina access. You'll note just in the water side, that's where the village docks are. Most people come to these marinas there, as well as going to the beacon restaurant or down to the the other resort hotel down to the west. We're also interested in environment and water quality considerations. All of this comes together in this one spot unusually. It's quite congested. And over the past few months, we've discussed this open space as a committee, and we are offering suggestions tonight, which we believe could enhance public safety, improve multilateral transit, increase access to the waterfront, and help address water quality and stormwater issues. We've reviewed a number of past analyses and studies, including the LWRP, including the water quality improvement project plan and the draft stormwater study that was done just last year, conducted by Cameron Engineering. Our ideas are consistent with and informed by these studies, and we've also discussed some of these ideas with the folks here on board and some members of the public and local businesses. At this point, we've had a conceptual plan with some preliminary recommendations for the board to consider. This is the first of what will be irregular reports, I hope, to the board. So we hope we sort of tell them to get it right. The idea is to initiate early and sustain a nation with key community stakeholders, and but nearby residents, perhaps businesses, village boards as well. I tend to, we all tend to speak with those folks and get their insight. We invite informed public participation and updating the media, and we want to provide a foundation for the requests for approvals that the committee is making this evening to the board in terms of there. So without further going into it with more specificity, I'll hand it over to lieutenant Drake.
Thank you, John.
Evening. I would first like to thank deputy mayor Hay and trustee Kane for including a representative of the police department onto this committee. The conceptual plan that we see tonight addresses a real public safety issue and shows how we can improve pedestrian safety and also pedestrian use of the open spaces. If you look at the top image, currently, there are no sidewalks or crosswalks on West Water Street or Long Island Avenue. The only option for the pedestrians is to walk on the narrow shoulder or actually in the roadway. This could be very dangerous to a village residents and visitors, especially in the night. This area has a very high volume of pedestrian traffic, especially in the summer months, having residents, hotels, restaurants, and marinas in that area. Looking at the bottom image, the plan proposes sidewalks above West Water Street and Long Island Avenue, along with marked crosswalks. This plan also includes a boardwalk along the Sag Harbor Cove side of West Water Street, which would not only improve the pedestrian use of the open space, but improve public access to the water while safely keeping the pedestrians out of roads.
I can point out just on what he just said, the, that is the lower, the lower image, the boardwalk we're talking about is right up here. Potentially. And the idea is that it could be designed and look very similar to what we're hoping to do further east between, say, Steinbeck Park and Long Island and Long Wharf. So it could be a consistency of design. It could be a nice esplanade. We've all been talking about an esplanade along the waterfront for a very long time. So this is an opportunity, perhaps, to do something which would allow people to do that, and it'd be safer, and it'd be better access to the waterfront. I'll step back.
In addition to improving pedestrian safety and access to the waterfront, our design concept shows that we can also improve ecological and environmental impacts of this area by implementing a series of bioswales with maritime grasses along the boardwalk and meadows and tree plantings along the bunker that would improve view sheds out to Sag Harbor Cove. This would also improve public parking along Long Island Avenue and West Quarter Street by adding spaces along old streets. So on the left side, you see where the potential bus stop is also being proposed, the implementation of meadows. On the right, you can see the boardwalk that we rendered as opposed to the ball heads, and like a series of bioswales and marine grasses.
Let me speak a little bit about a couple of other things. One is the bus stop, which is mentioned by Bailey. The buses already exist there. So when you're looking at an area and you want to think about how do we, how do we deal with this area, you need to work with what is there already. Buses go there, and I guess they hang out for a while. They're generally parked before they head on to Main Street. So we see what's there. We're trying to think, can we improve that and maybe moving them away from the residences a little bit? Maybe, maybe it's better if they're elsewhere. Maybe we want to formalize it, which was the idea of like, well, what if we did put a bus stop there? Would that alleviate traffic congestion elsewhere in the village? Maybe it would, maybe it wouldn't, but it's a conversation worth having. We have, it's conceptual. We have not spoken with the jitney people at all, but we put it in the photos to get an idea of what it might look like if we want to think that way. So I want to share that with you.
Just, yeah, if I could, I just want to let you know, I did speak with Mr. Lynch from the jitney and told him that what we were doing was conceptual and that we would bring him in to get his input on it. He was very positive and said that he would, you know, welcome to come and give his input on what we're proposing and maybe possibly there was needed to be an adjustment. He would give his input. So he's aware of what, what's going on.
There's lots of things to talk about.
Right. The other, the other thing too is you also have to take into consideration the Suffolk County Transit buses also. That's a different organization.
That's right.
That also uses the same drop off and pickup as the jitney on Main Street.
That's right. Yeah, and we haven't looked at the frequency and schedules. We haven't looked at all that yet. There were a lot of studies and things like that, just putting it out there as a thought to have. It is so conceptual, and in fact, in the images, the buses are facing the wrong direction. So that's a truth that we're actually just concept.
Yeah, the Suffolk County Transit is using on demand.
Yes.
They have a hundred percent more ridership than they did when it was on the schedule, which is pretty big.
I saw that. Yeah. That's important.
Yeah.
Bailey mentioned something about the landscaping that's there now that would be rejiggered to make it more environmentally friendly, maybe have a bioswale, maybe have, instead of having lawns, we take fertilizer, do other kinds of things, we're going to be pollinator plants, so you can improve the ecology of the area that way, which is very consistent with the waterfall and improvement project plans that we did back in twenty sixteen. In addition, some of you may know that there's actually, it's not visible in the, in the plans, but there's located in the small section, that triangular area, there's a beacon pump station. It's an underground, I think, where it's a, it's a, it's a water pump or two water pumps that pretty consistently pump out groundwater and, and stormwater from, from the areas going back toward the parking lots and into the bay, into the harbor. That's, we've been aware of that for a while. It's not, it's not something we, we love. And if you, if there's something you can do about remediating it, then you might consider doing that. This is an opportunity, perhaps, to consider doing something there. In the, in the Cameron Engineering draft stormwater plan study that was done last year, he looked at that problem, and he suggested potentially think about ultraviolet light remediation. If we were to do ultraviolet light, if it warps us through, potentially, it can, it can kill a lot of bacteria or virus that go into the bay. We know that there are, there are problems with, with some bacteria in the bay. We think the lava is coming from underground water in that area back there. It's, it's potential. What, what's recommended to us in the Cameron study is think about maybe doing a trial study in that location, a smaller pump, a smaller, a small pipe, and, and obviously during a scientific way, so we know whether it's effective or not. A lot of work we need to happen to make sure this is feasible, but it's worth considering, and we're including it as something for you folks to consider as well.
Are you talking about a, a pre and post treatment test or setup? Or a model that would, that would basically use the ultraviolet light, and you would test pre and post the treatment?
The impact.
You would do that. You would do that. Yes. And, and even, I'm not sure, I've, I've not been following the, the, the the testing so closely lately. Others in the village have. So we might know some of that, of the source of some of that bacteria now. I'm not sure if they tested inside the pipe or just outside the pipe. I know they tested the bay, so there's a little bit more knowledge to be done. But yes, you would, if you, if you set something up, you test pre and post and see if it's effective.
Yeah, that would be fundamental, because I know that they tested Windmill Beach. I don't think we have tested this outfall.
Yeah, okay.
And, and UV only kills bacteria, by the way, not, doesn't treat, for instance, nitrogen.
Not at all. No, no, there's nothing for nitrogen. And it may or may not be effective if the water is cloudy. I've, I've been told the past week that like, cloudy could be problematic. But these are things to work out, you know, people that are better scientists than I am. But worth considering is what we as a committee have proposed. So that's, that's the proposal, and I'll, I'll kick it back to trustee Hay, and he can talk to you about what specifically we might be asking from you tonight.
I just want, yeah, I just want to say thank you. Thank you to John and Rob, and thank you for stepping forward and.
Bailey.
Bailey.
Bailey. And, and, you know, participating. So much appreciated.
Thank you very much.
And by the, we'll get to that, but before we get to that, I also want to thank Drew Harvey's here, who's on the post act committee. Rory McAvoy's here, who's on the post act committee. And Rachel D's not here. She wasn't able to make it. And then I think, and Ed Hollander's traveling, but he sent the drafter. Ed's on the line. Great.
Rachel's online.
Rachel's online. Okay. And Bailey, thank you very much. She did the renderings for us. Really appreciate it.
Do you, do you have any idea how many feet we're talking of this boardwalk about approximately?
It would be about the same size as the one on Long Wharf, so four or five feet.
As far as width, I mean linear feet.
Oh, linear feet. Oh. We didn't have a finite ending to this. We depend on feedback, what people want it, that kind of thing, because it does end up in front of Aaron's Co., some of those condos, and it would depend on.
Thank you.
So, so thank you all very much. What I'd like to do, what the committee would like from the board now is two things. One is, you know, the preliminary analysis the committee's done has led to this and other areas that the committee would like to study. In order to do that, the committee needs the board to approve RFPs, really for environmental consultants and traffic consultants. The areas the committee would like to have those consultants study are this area they just presented on preliminarily as a conceptual plan. In addition, they'd like to, the environmental consultant to examine Havens Beach, this area and silly farm, the traffic consultants to evaluate this area and the entrance of the park, Mash Park. And so that's one specific request the committee is making of the board to prepare our peace, and the committee is happy to do a lot of the legwork if the board would authorize that for those, for those analyses.
Go ahead.
And then secondly, what's, which, which we were going to ask is, you've already done, is the jitneys reach out to the jitney to talk to them about, and, and if you suggest also Suffolk County bus. That's, those are the only answers.
Because the fence and the deck obviously are almost identical to what's on Long Wharf, and we've talked about running from Steinbeck Park under the bridge around that way.
Yes.
Could these be tied together in one big package, you think?
Possibly, but, you know, and this, this relates back to your original question about funding sources. And what we've also been doing is exploring different funding sources for different aspects of this project as well. So we would like to, as, you know, as part of the, once we, once, we would need the environmental assessments, the traffic studies to seek grant funding, to seek other funding sources. I believe trustee Kane has had conversations with the dock master as well, because there's some potential dock work that's going on there. Can, can certain aspects of these plans be packaged together for funding purposes? The, the boardwalk with the dock work, maybe. The environmental stormwater remediation pilot, is that something that can be subject to grant funding potentially as well? The traffic studies might be a whole different animal. I'm not sure, but we'd like, we'd like to explore grant funding opportunities as well as other funding sources, other revenue streams.
Any motion to, to get that, is that what you, that's what you're asking for?
I don't, does it require a motion for an RFP or?
Yeah, it will require a resolution, and, and we should have a little bit more information about where the, what the RFP is going to say, and we should have it for the board.
Okay, so if we prepare the resolution and the information between now and the next board meeting, we can bring a resolution to the board in January. Thank you.
I would say it's a great idea.
Yeah. I think that it's safety.
It's a good idea.
Great. Public safety wise too, you know, that walkway is important. People now in the summertime, as you probably have seen trustee Corish, where they're just walking down the street, basically.
I think, I think it's a wonderful idea. When we talk about Suffolk County bus, Suffolk County bus tends not to attract the same number of drop off and pickup automobiles as the jitney does. And it may be, I'm not sure if we can have the jitney in one place and Suffolk County bus in another place, but that's all things that we can, we can discuss. I love the idea. I think it's fantastic. I'd like to thank everybody who contributed towards getting it to this point. I look forward to helping with the grant funding, and we can talk about that offline as to how we will proceed with, with, with that aspect.
Thank you.
Great.
Thank you, Aiden. So is that the end of your reports or?
That's the end of my reports.
Okay, so that'll bring us to.
Cassie's saying.
Yes. Somebody raise their hand.
At the end of the.
Yeah, at the end of the report, they can comment. So that leads us to the man on the screen, trustee Corish.
Well, I.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, mayor. I, I don't have any nice visuals, and reporting on sewage treatment plan tends not to be quite as exciting. It's these great new projects, but here goes anyway. For the month of November, the total gallons received is one point eight two seven millions, million gallons. Gallons of sludge removed was seventeen thousand five hundred. Our DMR reports were forwarded eleven twenty four. Suffolk County DHS inspection date next, next inspection will be January the eighth. As always, the New York State DC inspection date is open. We had no complaints for the month of November. And a summary of operations, wastewater treatment plant running well. It's under all permitted levels. We're now operating on three basins. We, on eleven sixteen, we had then some contracting came out to set up a VFD, set up the VFD pumping parameters, also for repair, to make a repair on a communication link from the influence valves to the operating computer. We had a little power problem down there, so on Thanksgiving, eleven twenty three, PSEG was called out to repair the electrical service or standby generator. Our standby generator kicked in. There were no issues. The electrical service was repaired. Like to thank everybody who came out on Thanksgiving to do that. And the operation continued without any interruption. The flow from October to November was a decrease of 305,000 gallons. And that concludes the sewer department, the sewage treatment plant report. And moving on to the grants and grants are very good news this month. There was a lot of applications out there that we've been waiting to hear about. On December 6th, we got notification from New York State that our application grant for funding for the comprehensive plan was approved to the amount of $176,400. The village has, I understand, we we will have a 10% copay on. So I think it'll bring it up to about $190,000 for the plan. And that's fantastic news. So everything we've been talking about about developing the comprehensive plan for the village. We've now been funded by New York State to start that process. And there'll be a lot more conversations, obviously, as we press ahead. Just hot off the presses, just before we came to the meeting tonight, we got notification again from New York State that our application that had been denied last year and we reapplied this year for our sewer service expansion area was approved to a certain amount. We got an approval tonight for $2,021,065 from the state of New York, which is really fantastic. It changes the whole outlook of this project as we move into the new year. We have for the sewer shed KL and engineering on I. So far, we have grant fund, grant commitments to the tune of $8,626,852. We're also waiting to hear from a federal grant that we that has made its way through the House in Washington DC. And that's for one and a quarter million dollars through Congressman LaLota's office. I've been told that this will likely be passed through the Senate and and make its way to the president for signing. And if that is the case, we'll be looking at a sort of a sore chest of as we progress into the execution phase. So this is very exciting. We obviously have a lot of work to do. We'll start meeting right after Christmas as we get into the new year to start going out to bid and 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 putting these funds to great use. I would like to take this opportunity to thank everybody involved in this effort. All the folks from Suffolk County, East Hampton Town, Southampton Town, New York State, and now the federal government. It seems we've reached out to and we've been successful in attracting attracting funds from every level of government from Saicarver to Washington DC. But I'd like to thank a grant writer, Jen Esiana, who's worked tirelessly to get this done. Ed Hay has worked with us in getting some of the finer details ironed out. And so I think we're in a fantastic position to start soaring connecting homes to sewer to the sewage treatment plant and continuing our efforts to clean up the water. So thank you, mayor. It's great news.
Thank you.
Fantastic. Really great.
Nine and a half million beats a PowerPoint every time.
Also, yeah, I spoke to Peter Ganley, who works for Congressman LaLota recently. And he said that that 1.25 million is in the there's five combined appropriations that are going going to the Senate and it should just work its way right through there. So that's.
And they did request, I spoke to his to Congressman LaLota's office last week. And they did request that we write to our senators just to just to 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 let them know that this is something that's very important for the village. And we would really love their help in getting this through the Senate. So this is something again, mayor, we can talk about offline. And I think we could get letters maybe from other other local leaders to just to reinforce our case. It it makes a huge difference.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
So that brings us to trustee Plum.
Hello.
Public Works Historic Preservation and Architectural Review Board.
All right. So the public works first, the annual leaf pickup is almost done. Enough of the leaves already. You take six times, it takes three trucks, three leaf fax, and six full time workers to accomplish this. It's a lot of work, but it's pretty much done now, which is good. There's still a rover around in case there's random pile here or there to pick up. The round pond restoration has been complete. I meant to go and take a picture of it today, but I didn't down on the division. The janitors have hung the wreaths on Main Street, which looks great. Jackson Dods put up the Christmas trees on Main Street and hung all the lights and the big tree on the wharf. The new LED streetlight project is complete. It's complete. There are a bunch of what they call Cobra heads, those individual lights around the village that are going to be swapped out over the next couple of months by East Hampton Town to just change the lamp, the bulb, not the fixture itself to the new LED, the 2700k LEDs. And by the way, these can be dimmed, these fixtures. It's a little complicated, but they can be dimmed. The ones on 114 are a little bit bright, some I've been told, but they can be dimmed down. It also lengthens the life of the bulb, which is also good. The most they've noticed on Ryson Street, Burke, Union Jefferson, they're getting new water mains. And there that's an ongoing project. If you're wondering why the pipe is so big, because I was. And it's because now they the technology is to store more water in the ground as opposed to up on the hill. So I thought there was a little overkill myself, but there's a reason they're doing it that way. And so there's that. And then the HP ARB, we're meeting with Jean and Chris Talbot, the inspector, building inspector. And was it Lynn Stu? Whatever. Anyway.
And Steve. And Steve.
And Steve.
Yeah.
We're trying to pick up on keep the HP ARB decisions and how those are enforced in the field. Those are trying to develop a process within the building department. It's nothing. It's not a code change. And like that's really procedural matter of of having the inspectors have the information on hand that has come down from the HP ARB. Doesn't sound that big, right? But anyway, we're going to do that and do that this week, which is great. And so and that's my report.
Thank you. Thank you, trustee Plum. So that brings us to trustee Kane with the Building Department, Harbors and Docks and the Harbor Committee.
Okay, great. Good evening, everyone. I'll start off with the docks. So for the November 23, you know, we're really into beginning all the winterization work. And for all of you to realize that all the boats are supposed to be out of the water October 31st. Sometimes there's a straggler here or there, but we're all in good shape. And then along with the other winterization, there's the dinghy docks that were dissembled, disassembled, get that word? And moved to Marine Park Basin. The ice eaters were placed at Marine Park, Marine Park Basin, and the transient docks AB and BB dock. And that's really just to preserve the pilings. The Dockmaster's boat was removed from the water, cleaned and winterized. The Dockmaster's office on Long Wharf was also winterized. And all the boats at Havens Beach were removed. There were two out, two kayaks that had been left. So they were now impounded, which is what we need to do after October 31st. And then B dock was disassembled and winterized. So a lot of work comes as we close things down. We are working on, and and this is a combination of Harbor Master Bob Borey and Chris Torrier putting together new GPS coordinates and numbers for the outer moorings. We're working on really trying to organize that. And I I'd mentioned it last month. So we can have very clear direction of where boats will be moored out in the outer mooring. And then if there are issues, it'll help the Harbor Masters have that information because they'll have it right on their phones. And it'll be very efficient as we continue to go forward. So we want to thank Billy Mack who from First Coastal, who helped work on the GPS points coordinates for us. And we will be working on putting a new application process together as we finalize this and work on any changes to the code that we need to do. That's what we're in the middle of reviewing. So we'll be back next month on that. And as as we do that, we'll be collecting all the information for the boats that are moored out there. So we'll have the name of the boat, the owner, their insurance, all that vital information. Again, will be right stored in our, what's called a DAW system. And again, it's just using technology to help the Harbor Masters efficiently do their job. So we are looking at adding a 2,000 gallon holding tank at Marine Park for the excess boat waste. As we did have some issues last year with the truck that was supposed to come and take the waste so that the pump out boat could continue to operate. There were times things were slowed down because the takeaway car or trucks weren't there. So this could be a solution to that. So these are the things that we're reviewing. And then from a financial point, the month of November, we had a total of 7,693 that came in. And that brings up us up to a total for the year of 1,873,954. And that's running about 19% of 2022. So that's for Harbor. And then for the building department. When we look at November, there were 10 building permits, 42 inspections, three certificates of occupancy, and 13 notice of violations. Total receipts for the month were 96,871, which brings us currently up to 698,959. And that is putting us ahead of our budget of 440 of greater than 58%. So we are in good shape there.
Thank you, trustee Kane. So can I have a motion to accept the department reports?
Move it.
Motion by Deputy Mayor Hay, seconded by trustee Plum. All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. So carried. So that brings us to our public comment section. That's 15 minute public session. Input for comments and questions. We're going to limit three minutes per speaker concerning the treasurer's report or any of the department reports that were just presented. Yes. So you want to state your name and your address?
Richard O'Brien, 18 Bridge, Hall of Close condominium. I wanted to read a letter to record from the Hall of Close condominium unit owners. I just liked it before to read the letter that this letter was written prior to our knowledge of what was presented tonight. It was strictly on the drop off location for the Hampton.
So how does it? How does it? Let me ask you, how does it change from what you saw?
There's several things that were added that we weren't.
Are favorable to you or disfavorable? Are they favorable?
I would say most of them are disfavorable.
What you saw tonight was disfavorable?
To myself.
Okay, so so continue.
I could say it at the end, but I.
Okay, sure.
But I'd like to read it to record. But 19 of the homeowners at the condominiums signed off on. And at the end, I don't know, do you want me to read their names or is it just like it's on the paper and some record?
I think as long as it's on the letter, that's fine. Yeah.
Okay, so the reason is moving the Hampton jitney to the drop off location to West Water Street. We, the undersigned residents of Hall of Close condominiums, propose the relocation of the Hampton jitney drop off pickup location, bus stop from Main Street to West Water Street for the following reasons. Number one, the proposed location on West Water Street is close enough to the condominiums property and buildings that I think buses will be detrimental effect on air quality and will cause noise pollution. The park lot setting overlooking the bay at this location and the natural vegetation also suffer. Number two, the condominium's private parking lot on Long Island Avenue is adjacent to the proposed bus stop and would inadvertently be used by people waiting by either for either the ride to Hampton jitney or to pick up arriving passengers. With limited parking spaces in our lot, this would create havoc and inconvenience for condominium unit owners. The condominium does not have the resources to constantly monitor who is using its parking lot. Parking facilities at the local restaurants in the Marina would also be adversely affected. Number three, there is no public convenience such as shelter or bathrooms at the West Water Street location. Number four, the main selling point of the homes at the Harvest Close condominiums is its location adjacent to the harbor. Placing a drop off pickup bus location directly between the condominium and the harbor will obstruct the obstruct the view and seriously distract from the condominium's appeal. Number five, people waiting for the bus and waiting to be picked up on the bus will cause crowds to gather at locations several times a day, particularly in the summer, which would be incongruent with residential neighborhood. Number six, other convenient and more central locations for the bus stop throughout the business district of the village exists that would have less much harmful effects. We urge the village board of trustees to deny any proposal to place the Hampton jitney drop off location at West Water Street when more attractive alternatives exist and is signed by 19 homeowner units. Like I said, this was written before we knew about everything that was on the post today. And the things that just caught my eye were crosswalks that go directly to the condominiums, parking spots that back into Long Island Avenue. They themselves admitted Long Island Avenue is a very heavy traffic area. To have people backing into that, to me, seems ridiculous. There's no park, there's no sidewalks that would be able to walk down that way. That's just it. And the other thing was I noticed that on the schematic, it looked like they wanted to propose also putting bathrooms in. They said, well, I believe it's water closets. I mean, so you're talking about putting.
Well, Mr. Mr. Shaka and the other member said that this is conceptual. So we were looking for, we're looking for input.
Wanted to let you know that we haven't.
Right.
We haven't been presented with that. So I'm only addressing the bus.
Just the bus situation. So you had no problem with the with the walkway or anything like that? Okay.
Because there is a problem all day. We work there all the time. It is.
And you know, in the summertime, there's.
It's very.
Yeah.
Like I said, and and the other part that I'd like to bring up that kind of maybe, I won't say upset. You mentioned about the buses are there now. That doesn't make it that it's right or it's legal. Those buses aren't supposed to be there now. When they go there now and they park with this lot that's proposed, this pickup, it totally blocks. It's like looking at a a billboard.
And they idle longer than.
Excuse me, ma'am. Yeah, but one person at a time, please. And I'll give you a chance to speak.
We've complained to the bus company in the past. I believe some tolls have been made to the village.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. Thank you for your input. Next. Yes. Do you want to step forward, ma'am, and state your name and your address? You would you like to speak?
It'll be on. He'll submit.
Hi, I'm Sizy Elger, and I'm also a resident of Harbor Close. I was a little late because I was hiking up that little tiny hill to tell the driver to stop idling, which I've done, I don't know, three times today.
Where was this?
It's above that small island.
Right.
Which is where they park, which as was said, just because they're there, it doesn't make it correct. So I what one has, I checked the bus number and called the company. I say bus number 154 is idling. Tell the driver to turn. I mean, it's a ritual.
Is this a jitney bus or a Suffolk County Transit bus?
Jitney bus happens constantly, especially as it gets colder. And I just, I was wondering if it would be possible to see that image. I mean, I appreciate that it's conceptual at this point. That one really gives me a lot of hope.
What did you want to see?
The one that's.
Do you want to take the take my coffee here?
Yeah. You have it up on the.
I don't know if we could pull. It's the same thing.
Same.
As long as people can see it. I don't know that they can.
Well, you can refer to it.
Okay. So my question really is that this island is is really, really narrow. If, I mean, I live literally paces away and I can hear the idling in my apartment, which is the other reason why it's upsetting.
There you go. Is that? Does that help you?
Yeah, exactly. Thank you. So I guess I'm wondering, I think it's a great idea to have sidewalks. I guess I'm wondering, would they be at the top end there? Or was they be along Long Island Avenue?
It would be. That's a conceptual drawing. Again, just want to emphasize that, I think, in the conceptual drawing, Bailey, both sides, correct?
Proposed on the top of the island and then on Long Island Avenue, they're proposed on the other side of the street, so closer to. They're proposed on the other side of the street, so closer to.
On the south side.
South side, the south side of Long Island Avenue and the south side of Water Street.
Okay, um because it, it makes it really difficult to imagine how that street could get smaller. You know, in other words, by putting sidewalks on it. I mean, it's pretty small as it is. And the idea, because the jitney, they can only go one way and then the other way.
And so again, conceptual plan.
No, but I still have to.
Uh and, and we have to, and, and, and we are going to have traffic consultants and engineers if the board approves that at next month's meeting. Examine this, examine um Jermaine and Main Street intersections.
And these are the kinds of things they look at.
Exactly.
Exactly.
These measurements, these.
Would you, let me just ask you a question. Would you agree that we should be trying or putting effort into improving that area as far as walking and public safety?
Sure. I mean, I think the idea, although I don't know where, again, I don't know where the space comes from, but at the sidewalk, the idea of a sidewalk in that parking lot is really good. I don't know about a sidewalk on.
It's three minutes. Okay. All right, so in, out of respect for other speakers, we are at three minutes. So if you don't, if you don't have anything else to add briefly. Okay, I appreciate it.
Feel free to take that with you.
You, you can take that. I can get another copy. Yes. Anybody else that, before I get to you, Tom, this woman, I guess she wanted to speak. I don't know your name. If you could step forward and.
Hi, I'm Paula Raffo. I'm also eighteen Bridge Street, the condos. Um I just want to say that the, I have deer in my patio. The, the house that the compound that was built on Long Island Avenue to the west of me. The, oh, the, the amount of, you talk about helping the biosphere, but the amount of wildlife that's been displaced from that compound being built. And they're still in construction from September over a year ago.
You're talking from, you're talking a project that's across.
The Black Compound House on Long Island.
I think I have an idea what you're talking about.
Which is also directly across the street from.
Right.
Where you want to build. And to talk about the biosphere, helping the biosphere. And my actual experience of calling the jitney and screaming at the top of my lungs to stop idling because they have the air conditioning on there, no place else to put the bus. And with the brick buildings that have been, you know, the condos that across the street and the Chivoni project and the, it's constant construction now. Affordable housing on the bridge street and the bus depot. I, I just, I came out, I've been here since nineteen eighty, but retired after a year permanently. And it's like, I might as well go back to the city. You know, I have PTSD from nine eleven and all I hear is, and if you do that.
So what, let me.
You can have marine bore piling.
Let me ask you a question again. Specifically, what was conceptually shown?
I, I think just because you have an empty space, doesn't mean you have to fill it.
I, I'm not saying fill it, but.
Nature.
Right.
Nature along, leave it alone a little bit. You know, it's nice that we don't have a sidewalk and people are walking with their coffee and it's nice. It's a little rugged, and that's what I loved about Sag Harbor. You can't polish everything. It's not that kind of a ship. Maybe it is now, but it wasn't when I first came here.
Thank you.
We have, Tom asked to speak, so. Just wanted.
Nice idea, West Water Street. My question of obviously is, what about the sidewalk on Jermaine Avenue? We've been asking how it repaired for eight years and it's still.
Well, we're, we're in the, we have a meeting scheduled with the school, I believe, this week. And we're going to discuss that, exactly what we're going to be doing in that area. So if you would like to be a part of that, Tom, you're, you're welcome to join in. Okay. I believe it's Thursday, is it this Thursday or?
Thursday at eleven AM.
At eleven AM. It's be, it'll be here. I'm not inviting the public, just in case. Our former, this is our former police chief, for those of you that don't know.
So you are actually going to look into?
Yes.
Absolutely.
Yes. Right, we've had the county out to take a look, I believe, at, at the area. So something has to be done. Absolutely.
I appreciate it. Thanks.
You're welcome.
Cass.
Yes. We're not going to be able to see, can you?
My, am I able to be heard?
Yes.
Oh, hi. Hi, my name is Nat Igosi. I own forty-five West Water Street, forty-one West Water Street, a number of properties on Long Island Avenue, seventy-five Main, eleven Princeton. Thank you for the opportunity to say hello. I'm here because I was reached out by the group that Ed Hay, Trustee Hay and the group put together on this effort uh with regard to West Water Street. First, I would like to commend the effort. I completely understand what a conceptual plan is. The message here really is, do we need a project like this or some version of this or not? I would urge the village to move forward expeditiously with this project in some way, shape or form. The safety issues that are occurring in that stretch from the post office all the way down to my property to Sag Harbor Inn is quite concerning. Traffic moves quickly. Most of the people are driving through that area, not familiar with the area at all. They're not from here. They're visiting restaurants, they're visiting hotels, they're not from their area. Um people are speeding through that area. The lighting is not good. There is not a sidewalk. Everything about that area just has variety of safety issues. Alcohol is served in the establishments that are on that street. Um the street is narrow. We've added some additional parking because we need it. So um the area does need attention. I would, I, I support the need to do something in that area. I would suggest, though, that we extend the area, not just from what was shown on the image, but all the way from the post office. If you leave the post office here and you're heading in the direction towards the hotels, you're sort of lost, particularly if you're on the sidewalk of the post office side. You don't actually know where to go. How do you cross Bridge Street? How do you cross Long Island Avenue? And how do you go across West Door? So I would suggest that with the effort actually commences uh over by the post office and the planning includes um the transition from that sidewalk on both sides of Long Island Avenue onto West Water Street and the transition to um Long Island Avenue. I also suggest that the uh, the effort also includes all the way up to the Sag Harbor Inn. So it doesn't end just at Barron's Cove. It also continues over to the marinas and over to the hotel. We have guests that go back and forth. We urge them to park and walk. They do that. And they come back and they express their unhappiness with some of the safety issues. The roadways are not lit, people are driving, et cetera. So I think that encompassing the area in a, in a more larger area would be useful and helpful. As far as the bus is concerned, I think the bus sort of evolved and be, and ended up in that location. Idling buses, um blocking views of water, uh taking up other people's parking spaces that could be parked by residents or guests of the area is probably not a good idea. And to, to basically um allow that bus to continue to be there is something that would require a lot more effort and just takes up more, even more real estate that probably could be better served for some of the other functions, such as the sewer project. I know it, um Trustee Corish is working towards extending this, the sewer uh down Long Island Avenue. I know also the stormwater pump station that we've, we heard earlier doesn't have any treatment at all. It just takes the water right out of the municipal parking lot in Bridge Street and just dumps it right onto the bay. UV is fine, but it doesn't remove particulates. It, it, it doesn't remove uh the oils that come out of that parking lot. It just basically takes everything out of the parking lot, every rainwater, and just spews it out into, into, into the code. So I, I think this project is great. I think um the, the village should move forward in retaining some professionals that could explore some of the topics that have been raised today. Um I appreciate my time.
Thank you. Thank you, Nat. Any, anybody else? Kay?
Yes, I just have two, uh two, two thoughts. I was confused. I thought you would just informally, the jitney was just using that spot as idling, but it sounds like there's, might be a move of foot to actually make that the drop-off and pickup place.
That's, it's something that's being proposed. Just an idea.
So it's both. Yeah.
Yep.
Sometimes I do, I go by, by Marine Park, idle there.
Right in front of VFW this morning. I saw them.
A lot, a lot on the turnpike as well sometimes.
Yes.
By the park.
The other thing is, I do think that what Dr. Bogler did is testing, he tested that Beacon Street area.
He did.
We have that. Yeah.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, that brings us to a public hearing. We have a local law amending Village Code, Chapter one sixty-seven, Noise. One sixty-seven dash four, Sections A and two, exceptions to amend the hours of construction activities that are exempt from the noise provisions. Do you want to give us a brief on that, counsel?
Sure, this is just um amending the time for construction activity noise to occur and eliminate Saturdays. And therefore it extends the noise till from six PM, which is what the code currently says, to seven PM on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursdays and Fridays.
So basically this would say no heavy, no heavy construction on Saturdays. Okay. An extra hour on the weekdays.
Extra hours. It only lasts three hours of work time a week. Because we had it now.
Right.
This is on for a public hearing tonight, and then I also prepared a resolution of adoption. Board wants to move forward after the hearing.
Tom, mayor, if I could just ask a question for clarification. Um we're talking about noise, so for argument's sake, if an electrician was working on a Saturday, which is fairly quiet work, or a plumber, is that permitted under this code change?
I would, I would say that.
It's inside.
Yeah, inside work or if you have an emergency and something needs to be serviced or repaired or it's certainly permissible, I would think. This is something, what we're trying to address is the heavy construction on a Saturday. We have, you know, trucks blocking the roadway or, you know, you have, you have uh payloaders working or.
Generators.
Generators, that sort of stuff. Yep.
And will also impact leaf blowers.
Right.
Well, leaf blowers have already have their own.
Right. Do you have anything to add to that, counsel, or?
No, I think you're, I think that's.
That's pretty accurate, right?
It's really the noise of construction activities.
Okay, it's a noise issue as opposed to um any activity. So, okay, I understand.
Right. Thank you, Trustee. So we've already opened this, this uh to the public, correct, counsel? So open it again. Motion to open the hearing. Motion by Deputy Mayor Hay, seconded by Trustee Kane, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now open. Anthony, would you like to come forward?
Good evening. It's the new vermin law, sixty-eight Union Street. Um so just a couple of questions here. First, no, no problem at all with the, the Saturday, not having the heavy construction on a Saturday. I'm just questioning, what was the thinking behind eight AM to seven PM instead of seven AM to six PM?
What do you mean, what was the thinking?
Uh and for the timing on the, uh for the work, work hours on, on Monday through Friday.
We're trying to ameliorate the impact of losing the work hours on Saturday.
No, I, I, I understand that.
He's shifting it. He's shifting.
Adding the extra hour to the end of the day rather than the beginning of the day.
Well, I would, but I would also say, they work till seven o'clock anyway. I mean, during the summer, they're, it's, y- y- you're not going to go tell someone to stop when they have.
I, I mean, it's kind of like choose your poison, right? I mean, you get the extra noise in the morning or, or the afternoon, but um.
Right.
My personal opinion is, I mean, with traffic and everything in the morning, I'm usually woken up by seven, seven AM anyways and kind of enjoy the little bit less traffic later in the day, but you know, whatever. Um I, but I think the bigger question I have here is just with enforceability here. Who's going to be enforcing this? And I think about the, the leaf blower law, uh which generally has been working. It's probably been one of the few sort of quality life sort of things in the village that has sort of improved rather than gone downhill in the last ten years or so. Um but you know, every once in a while, there are people who are using their leaf blowers on a Saturday or even a Sunday. And usually it's not the big companies. You know, usually it's the guys with the pickup truck who just don't know what the, what the rule is. Um so who is going to be enforcing this on, uh on Saturdays and Sundays?
Bruce Scavoni.
Well, the, the, what, what usually typically what happens is they call the police.
Right.
Am I correct?
Especially on a Saturday.
And they would document the fact that there was heavy construction going on at that time, violating the, the code. And then they would report that to our code enforcement, who would then cite the applicant or whoever was doing construction at the time that they weren't supposed to be.
So the process is, is you go, you call the police first.
Right.
Then the police for, uh forwards it to.
To, to code enforcement. Correct.
Do the police have the ability to, to come to, you know, at that time to come to the job site and say, hey, you guys shouldn't be working now? Or is that something that they have to work, wait until the actual?
They, they have the authority to do that, for sure.
What's that?
I believe they have authority to do that. I don't get it. Yeah.
All right, that's, that's what I have for.
I agree, though, code enforcement is problematic in, in a lot of areas.
But you know, the hope is that first, some people, self-police, not do it. Um and there will be exceptions and, and they'll have to be enforced and we'll have to work on that if it doesn't work the way it currently works.
Kay?
I just have one more thing. You know, we have brochures. The, the leaf brochures, maybe Anthony should get you something, you know, he ends up, there's English on one side and Spanish on the other. And we can, it's thousands of font if you're caught. So what's that information?
We do have that. It's in English and Spanish. English, yeah.
Yes, it's in English and Spanish, that's what you said.
Any, anybody else want to comment on this? Okay, can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion.
Second, motion by Trustee Kane, seconded, seconded by Trustee Plum, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? So Carrie, can I have a motion to adopt?
Make that motion to adopt the new hours.
Trustee Kane, second.
Second.
Seconded by Deputy Mayor Hay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So the resolution is, or local law is adopted. That brings us to the second local law on, on our public hearing, which is a local law amending Village Code three hundred dash nine point four, Section D, fences, walls and gates to increase the height of permitted gates. Do you want to give us a quick brief on that, counsel?
Sure, this is going to be a public hearing um for amending Section three hundred dash nine point four to allow for um driveway gates to be higher. They were originally four feet in height um above natural grade and this will allow them outside of the historic district to be six feet in height above natural grade, um provided a minimum of fifty percent of the gate materials open or non-opaque. And that the gate posts at a driveway entrance are set back um eighteen feet from the edge of the street pavement to allow cars to pull in. And then also it would um maintain that other entry gates like walkway gates or walkway paths are going to be four feet in and outside of the historic district, so.
Okay, so I have a motion to open the public hearing.
Make that motion.
Motion by Trustee Kane, a second. Seconded by Trustee Plum, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The hearing is now open to the public for comment. Have any comments on this? Input? Mr. O'Brien?
I'd just like to make one comment, Richard O'Brien again. If, if that goes into effect and we didn't want to put gates at the condominium on Long Island Avenue, with that eighteen-foot adjustment, you can see how it's going to affect just before we're going to start to address the parking lots because of what's been proposed. And that eighteen foot, you can see that it's even back to traffic up even further. So I just want to say that, you know, I'm going to bring it to the uh board's attention that this has been the rule, which I agree with. I'm just saying it's, it's going to add even more congestion.
The latest of the eighteen-foot setback is so that the car pulls off the road before the gate opens.
Right. We, our parking lots are so small, that eighteen foot's going to be into the parking lot.
Right.
But you would, you, yeah, you would be in a pre-existing non-conforming, right? So this, this wouldn't change, yeah.
They don't believe so.
No?
Do you have an existing gate there?
You have an, you don't have an existing.
Only if you had an existing.
That it would be affected.
It wouldn't be.
So that ties into the other things, so. All right, thank you.
Yes, Eileen?
I'm just curious, I, I don't.
Could you, could you come up and?
Sure, I'm sorry.
Please, and identify yourself.
I'm in Roseburg, Hancock Street. I'm just curious as to what the motivation was to decide to increase the height of the gate. I wasn't. Yeah, I have feelings only or the other, but I'm curious to know what.
So there have been a, a number of cases, not in historic district, but in Sag Harbor Village, the extending neighborhoods where there are multiple, um, houses that have put them up. And so we've been in conversation with them, and because we really wanna continue the visibility piece and the whole idea that Sag Harbor is a walking village, a solution would be that you can see through. So the reason why they were asking them, some was for safety. Some of the concerned about, since there's been these cars that have been, there's been more car theft in quite a while. That was a request by several applicants, um, as well as trying to keep some of the deer out. So the combination, it made us think, you know, not to say that there aren't ever deer downtown, I'm not saying that, but there are more in the other areas. So this was a good compromise to, um, A, continue the visibility piece. We're not inviting people to put six-foot fences up everywhere that you can't see into them. And again, this is just the gates. This is not the hallway. Exactly.
I think one, I, I recall, because it was something near my neighborhood, Chatfield Hill, where they put up a rather high fence, six feet, but this would be just the gate.
Yes, for both the drive or as, um, as our legal Liz stated, you know, you know, walking in gates.
So it's really in response to the fact that people have been trying to do this, and it's a compromise.
Yes.
All right, thank you. So I, I, I don't know if more people from the public are gonna speak, but I apologize, it's not ready for adoption tonight. If we could, if we could adjourn this public hearing and keep it open, I know the agenda says otherwise, sorry.
Any other public comments? Okay, motion to adjourn, keep this open?
I'll move it.
Second, motion, Deputy Mayor Hay, seconded by trustee Kors, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, so this will be adjourned until next month. That brings us to the continued public hearing. Local law to create village code, chapter two fifty-three, tree preservation. Do you wanna give us a brief and any changes that we've made?
So the only, the only change, this is a continued public hearing for, uh, tree preservation law, chapter two fifty-three, to be established in the village code. And the only change from the last, um, meeting was, um, the amendment of the eighteen D B H to twelve inches. Um, so it would regulate, uh, include trees with a D B H of, uh, less than twelve inches. So that would be the standard, and that was the debate that was ongoing with the public and the board, so. That was what I was told to make.
Yeah, so another issue I'd like to address is, uh, on the enforcement side of this. If I'm reading it correctly, the, if you have one tree of twelve-inch D B H that you wanna remove, you have to come forward with, um, an arborist plan of your entire property. In addition to paying for the tree being removed in order to get the permit, and I would propose that in certain situations or at the building department's discretion, that those requirements are waived. That the building department has, has the discretion to waive those requirements in any instance of.
I, I would agree with that, because if it's just one tree, as opposed to, you know, so much of the concern that we have is clearing and the.
And, and it'd be.
Thousand dollar fine. And that's not gonna, a twelve-inch cow per tree costs fifteen thousand.
Well, it.
So I'm, I'm agreeing with you.
Yeah, exactly. I'm, I'm just, and, and so a thousand dollar fine, what you don't want is, we, what we don't wanna do is set up a law that people, it's gonna be more cost-effective to people to violate the law.
Right.
To, to a full survey of your property and of all the vegetation in your property, for one tree to be removed, um, is gonna cost more than a thousand dollars plus to have the tree removed. Um, so, counsel, if you can, uh, figure out a place to put that discretion, give that discretion to the building department to waive those requirements.
Sure, we'll do that for January ninth. This was gonna be, um, continued and renoticed for January ninth anyway, for, to accommodate the, the new twelve D B H.
While we're on the subject of enforcement, I just in general feel that there are other municipalities that have much stricter or onerous penalties for violating various things, including delayed C of Os. The property can't change hands for a year or two years in some places. Just wanna throw that out there, because Tony was talking about enforcement, and, um, I think it's something we need to address globally.
Okay, point taken.
And are you talking about doing so in this piece of legislation?
Not this one.
Okay, okay.
So we should review fines and what, how it's set up in neighboring.
But not for this legislation, you're saying? So, so not here?
Not here with this right now.
Okay.
So with that, the change that the board is proposing to the single tree and the requirements being waived to, to discretion of the building inspector. Or any other public comments on this piece of legislation? Eileen? Local law.
Sorry to see you, and I wish Jane would be in my place for a change, but she is not available. I will make this brief. Uh, we only got the new draft yesterday, so we really haven't had a chance to review it. But we did want to, we sent out an email, which I would amend a little bit. I just wanted to comment briefly. Okay, uh, we, to Mayor Gardella, Deputy Mayor Hay, and trustees, um, Kane and Kaden. Of course, uh, we wanted to sincerely and publicly thank you for your support of the tree preservation legislation. It's been very gratifying and hopeful to work with you, with this administration, and we wish to acknowledge your commitment, your diligence, and the openness you've shown throughout the process. We're especially pleased that the majority of the trustees seem to be in favor of the twelve-inch D B H, as reflected in the new, uh, revised draft. Uh, prior to the passage, I, I, I know it's not going to be passed tonight, there were some changes and maybe an oversight or two that were included in the current, uh, draft that may affect the impact of the legislation. We won't review them now, but, uh, Jane and I were hoping to, uh, review them a little bit more thoroughly and send them to you by the end of the week, so they can be reviewed for your consideration. So we look forward to finalizing that legislation and hopefully passing it very soon.
Thank you.
May I address a question to Ms. Dale?
Of course, go ahead.
Okay, um, I noticed the clearing thing has changed, but I know clearing isn't another part of the code. Is that why it's not? There were some additional changes. The clearing definition is no longer from there. I just wanted to clarify that.
This is, the only thing that was amended from the last version of this was the twelve to eight, the eighteen to twelve.
Of the amendment.
That's it. And.
It must not be compared.
Um, there is a section of clearing, which is, it's section three hundred dash nine point one one A, which is remaining. It says clearing, no clearing of any lot or parcel of land for any current activity which requires a building permit shall occur except incidental to and after the issuance of such building permit. That's the clearing in here.
In one of the.
In the code currently.
Okay, in one of the areas, uh, the change was to twelve inches, but in another section, I think it still remained at eighteen. I think that's just a clear flaw of the town, but, um, we'll, we'll review it more carefully, and, um, I think I might, I have, I might have been comparing, or we might have been comparing to.
There have been a lot of.
That's possible. It's possible.
We'll make sure it's all.
And dating, it was, we didn't have a date on it, so it was really.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So from a process perspective, um, counsel, um, if you get revisions before the next board meeting and we properly notice them.
Then it can be on for adoption.
At the next board meeting?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any more public comments on this?
Yes.
This is a completely different.
Could, could, I'm sorry, could you identify yourself again, please, for the record?
I'm Susie Oliver. Thank you. I just was wondering if at some point, perhaps, if I meant to me, there could be a mic here.
There is.
It's right above you.
Well, it's hard to hear from behind, because the person is, you know.
Okay.
They're, they're, they're back, so I can't hear any comments, so I can't hear any of the questions.
It's supposed to go to the speakers that are. But if you're not hearing it, there could be an issue with the speaker.
Maybe, but there could also be a stationary mic. That might be easy to rip up.
Take it under advisement.
Thank you.
I couldn't hear you. Somebody said something. Anthony?
Good evening, Anthony Vermaigol, again. Um, so, you know, in the last few months of this has been before the board, I mean, ninety percent of this focus has been on appropriate D B H, right? And I, that's great. Twelve inches, eighteen inches, you know, frankly, if twelve inches is fine, whatever. But I, I feel like there has not been enough, uh, discussion, just on sort of the practical implications of the code. And I've already expressed to you some of my concerns on just a purely practical level. You know, I, I feel like this whole thing could, could be a lot simpler, it could be a lot more streamlined. I feel like this could have just been something where you just change the, you know, a, a few clarifications to the A R Bs purview, just saying that, you know, trees with the, uh, if you wanna take down a tree with a twelve-inch D B H, you have to get a certificate of appropriateness. Just like if you wanna change your, your, your paint color would have been have exactly the same positive effect in terms of preservase, preserving large trees as this whole code and everything that is involved in it, and it would have been just as effective. You know, I mean, we, we make all these rules to try to foil these developers, you know, both real and imagined, but I think what happens is the developers just kinda do whatever they want anyways, and certainly have the money to pay for all the, uh, consultants and the permitting and the survey work and all, and all that. And all this really does is just makes something, you know, makes this difficult for, you know, the ordinary homeowner who just wants to cut, take down a, a, a tree that is leaning on their neighbor's property, or just wants to get a little more sunlight in their property. I mean, you should have a right to have sunlight in your, you know, your own backyard if you want to. Without having to go through hundreds or even thousands of dollars worth of survey work and arborists and all that, which is what this is gonna, gonna do. So I was very pleased to see, you know, what, what Jean and, and Ed were saying earlier about maybe exempted, exempting some certain situations from this, this role. So say that tree that's leaning over on your neighbor's property, you don't have to go through getting the survey work, you don't have to go through, getting an arborist. You, you can just either go to the building department, or maybe even if you wanted to say, just get us an ordinary certificate of appropriateness, you just go to the A R B with a photo of the tree and say, hey, it's okay to take this down. Um, I think that would be, you know, adding some language like that in sort of these sort of case by, case basis on individual trees, which would just make this a lot easier, still have the same impact as of, of foiling the developers that we all wanna do, but at the same time, make this a lot more easier and manageable for ordinary homeowners. So please, in sort of the final draft of this, I really encourage you to, to, um, add some language to that effect. Uh, thank you.
Thank you, and please pay careful attention to it when we do. Anybody else wish to comment on this publicly? Okay, so I need a motion to adjourn this till next month.
I'll move it.
Motion by Deputy Mayor Hay, second.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Plum, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so the local law is adjourned till next month. That brings us to a local law to amend chapter two fifteen, seasonal use dwelling unit registry to create a rental permit registry for the village of Sag Harbor. And we've been going through this for quite a few months now. I believe trustee Kors had something he wanted to add. Was it? He's gone? I believe he had mentioned something about.
Yes.
Hot tubs or?
He corrected that in the.
I think we did it already.
Oh, he did?
Yeah, we're good.
He sent around the new.
So is this something we need to renotice because of that, or?
No, we did it. Yeah, and.
Ready, is this ready to adopt?
This is ready for adoption tonight.
Okay, there were some, I did, did, I'm sure you all received, received that email, the comments about the short-term rentals or taking that away, but my question is, every time, in other words, in a calendar year, is this, is this permit going to be good for the calendar year?
Two years.
Counsel, or two years, right?
Two years.
So really, all they need to do is file that permit for the residents for that piece of rental property, and that, that suffices for two years?
Yes.
Okay.
I think there are two things going on here. There's the, not addressed by this law, I think, is that there's already something on the books about short-term rentals, correct?
Right.
And what this does, though, is give the village, frankly, an enforcement tool for that for the first time, probably. So that's why the comments we're receiving are not about the registry, they're about short-term rentals.
Which is already in the code.
Exactly, so.
So then this way, for, um, homeowners that are looking to rent out their home, they will s- fill out the rental permit application, and they can either do it themselves, or they can have a professional do it for them. It'll be notarized, so they'll be saying, I have all of the carbon monoxide, fire, et cetera, et cetera. And so all the safety things are there. It'll also, then the building department will have a list of all those looking to do rentals. And, uh, y- you know, the question of people being able to rent things shorter or not, that's a different topic for us to look at. This will really just get it in place for the season of two thousand and twenty-four beginning. Not to say that if someone wants to rent their house starting in January, you know.
Okay. Do we have, I need a motion to open the hearing?
It's continued.
It's continued? Okay, so we have any public comments on this? Mr. O'Brien?
Just a comment or a question. Would the Sag Harbor notify Airbnb, the R B O, that this would be a new law in effect, and they have to abide by it for that fourteen-day residency? I mean, you need to cut the head of a snake off, and it's with these two organizations.
That's a, I, I think that that is something that we're gonna have to address. I mean, there's already, it's already in the code, but I think that it's already happening.
Yeah, and it becomes, I, I think.
I believe those entities actually require homeowners to abide by local codes. So it really isn't coming on the property owners to abide by the local code in their terms of being aware of it, so.
And it comes up with a calendar. That calendar should be blocked.
I mean, we have control over those sites.
Do you have anything to, to, any input on this registry at all?
I think the registry, I think you guys did an excellent job. I think it was well done, and I have no problem with that at all. I think it was all overdue, and unfortunately, you know.
Right.
It looks like it's gonna happen, so I think it's a job well done.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien.
And this will give the village insight into.
Right.
We'll learn, we'll learn from this.
That's just one step in the process of.
Does it look like it's gonna be a war?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
It gets, it's moving in that direction.
Yes.
Kate?
I just have one question. So if you have a house on your block, and they're renting for less than two weeks, it's up to me, pretty much, to, of a neighbor, to notify.
I would say.
It's, it's, you always have that opportunity, but once again, that is not this law. Yeah.
No, I know. I know it's not this law, but it's.
It's a practical matter, you're right. It does fall to the neighbor to.
Or homeowner.
Or homeowner.
No?
To the homeowner, too.
Well, the homeowner is.
By the way.
So can we keep this focused on, I'm sorry, the public discussion on this law, because we do have more to get through?
Yeah.
Okay, any more comments on the registry? Can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll move it.
Second.
Motion by Deputy Mayor Hay, seconded by trustee Kane, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is closed. Can I get a motion to adopt?
I'll move it.
Motion by Deputy Mayor Hay, second.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Kane, all those in favor? Seconded by Trustee Kane, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The local law is adopted. That brings us to our discussion items, and first up is governance recommendations for the village appointed boards and committees.
If I could, we've had separate discussions with board members, we've had communications about how our appointed boards and committees are structured. And if I could, I can summarize them in three groups of boards and committees. We have our statutory appointed, our statutory authorized boards, zoning, harbor committee. Planning Board, Historic Preservation and Board of Ethics. We also have compliance committees, committees that pop up when we receive grant funding that we have to form. In order to receive the grant funding sometimes. Another example of that is the Climate Smart Communities, which is sort of a committee. There are three?
Yes.
Okay, that's good. And then we also have advisory committees. Currently, we have authorized sewer committee park, which is a Steinbeck Park Committee. Waterfront Planning and Zoning Committee were all authorized back in two thousand and twenty. They're on the books. There are resolutions later to dissolve those committees, but they're no longer active and no longer frankly have a purpose. Those projects are complete. And we also have other advisory committees. We just heard a presentation today from POSAC, Public Parks and Open Space Advisory Committee. There's an Emergency Services Headquarters Advisory Committee, and there's the LWRP we've heard about today as well. And there's also an Environmental Advisory Committee. So the trustees have talked, the trustees and mayors have talked about recommendations for committee structure going forward. Those include that all committees have a draft charter. That includes the committee's purpose, composition and responsibilities. And that be in place by January, and the village trustees will work with the committee members now to develop those charters. Each committee should have a chairperson is another recommendation for consideration. So that we know who to go to with questions about the committees. Each committee should include, and these are all recommendations for consideration and discussion, a member of the village board, since they're village appointed the committees. Each committee should report to the mayor and the board of trustees regularly. All the committees and members should be reviewed by the mayor and board of trustees for reapproval, modification or dissolution each calendar year, at the end of each calendar year. The appointed board members should also be reviewed by the mayor and board of trustees each calendar year. The committees themselves and the committee members have longer terms, but there's still a review process that the board and mayor can do with committee members. To make sure the committees are functioning well. And the committee and board members should, you know, also certify annually. That disclose out any other appointed boards that they're they're serving on. And any potential conflict of interest with the village that might occur. We just want to make sure that, and also whether or not they're representing the village and other committees outside of the village, beyond the committees they serve on. Just so we understand the purview of the individuals and the committees. And then another recommendation is that the, the village clerk should maintain an index of prospective board members and committee members. As it is now, when we seek to appoint committee members and board members, we ask for resumes. And, and so the recommendation is we keep frankly, you know, a library, a file of resumes of people. To recruit for the boards of the village.
Thank you.
This is like, this is like a committee committee.
It's a way, it basically is a way for us to, you know, keep these, yeah, keep the committees focused on what their goals are and.
And keep the communication with the board open.
I would, you know, trustees in the past have been appointed to oversee.
A bunch of these, I didn't.
Oversee committees.
We're meeting regularly.
Right.
And they may or may not be meeting regularly, but if they are, and they are board appointed committees, they should report back to the board on what they're doing and should be within the scope of their purpose as well.
Any, anybody would like to add to that or any further discussion?
I think it's great, and then if if people would, in the future, want to volunteer to be on one of them. And they could let us know what their interests are and what their skill set is. That'd be terrific to have, as we said, like a bank of great prospective future members.
Yes.
This evening, I mean Rosenbergton Corbin Street. I'm actually very delighted to hear that this is in the works. I happen to be on the environmental committee. And we feel that we can do a lot of the legwork on behalf of the village. That could be very helpful, you know, providing input with the things that you're all involved with. So I think it's a wonderful way of going about it, as long as it doesn't become so onerous. But I think in the initial stages it may be, but I think it's an excellent idea.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that brings us, if we don't have anything else to add, that brings us to our next discussion item would be. Cornell Cooperative Extension Back to the Base are here to present to the board. Just let us tell us your name.
I'm Kate Rossi-Schmidt. I'm the aquaculture coordinator for Back to the Base Initiative under the Marine Program.
Could I also ask that you speak up so the people in the back can hear you?
Nice and clearly. Hi, and I'm Kim Warber. I'm the director of the Back to the Base Initiative for Cornell Marine Program. And we were invited here by Mayor Gerdella to talk a little bit about our initiative and some of the things that we've started to do in the vicinity of Sag Harbor. And some of the activities that we hope to do in two thousand and twenty four, just as a first step to get some stakeholder involvement. And make sure we're clear about what our intentions and what our possibilities are and the next steps to take from here.
Well, thank you. Thank you for being here. Let me just say welcome and I'm glad that you're here and able to discuss this with the public. So they're aware of the, all the great work that you're doing, and especially here in the harbor. So with that.
We appreciate that. So is there a slide advancement? Okay, yeah, we've got the next one. So just very, very briefly, in case anyone's not aware of Cornell Cooperative Extension Marine Program and who we are. So we are affiliated with Cornell University. However, we're not funded by Cornell University. We're our own five oh one C three nonprofit and a contract agency of Suffolk County. So we do receive some baseline funding through Suffolk County through the Marine Program. But we largely rely on grants on various different contracts, revenue from our education and outreach programs. And of course, donations from the public as well. So overall, we have about a hundred and sixty full time employees year round. That number almost doubles for the summer months with a lot of our fieldwork and camps and education programs that we have going on. And the Marine Program was founded in nineteen eighty five, so we like to say we've been giving Back to the Base since nineteen eighty five. Next one. So more specifically, to dig into a little bit about the Back to the Base Initiative. So again, this is a program of Cornell Marine Program. And this was founded basically as a way to better involve the public in our science based research and restoration efforts. And a way to really get the public involved in everything from our oyster reef installations to helping with our eelgrass restoration projects. And the whole litany of things. So we go on to the next one. So the whole basis of this Back to the Base Initiative is centered on having these long term receiving areas for our various restoration of activities that we do. Again, mainly focused on shellfish restoration, everything from scallop restoration and clam restoration. To creation and deployment of spat on shell oyster reefs. And then looking at marine habitat, we do a lot with underwater habitat restoration through our eelgrass initiative. And also a lot of coastal resiliency and living shoreline and coastal habitat restoration as well. So you can see we're based primarily on the east end, and those are the primary sites that we're currently working at now. We can go to the next one, please. Great. So really, the exciting thing that we're here to talk about tonight is the establishment of a Sag Harbor stewardship site. So through the years, we have done various eelgrass restoration efforts and shellfish restoration as well in the waters throughout Sag Harbor. But the current goal is to kind of build on those successes and really establish us as one of our long term receiving sites. So we see the most restoration success when we really have these longer term commitments. And we're able to add every year after year upon the plantings that we have, whether the, again, habitat or shellfish related. So again, this whole effort kind of got kicked off. We have our kids squid friends here today. But we actually have been doing a series of Back to the Base lectures at local breweries, kids with being one. So back in June, we gave a really detailed lecture on eelgrass habitat restoration. And we were talking specifically about, for the past, I think, six years, we've been maintaining a site off the Havens Beach. Kind of in the waters between Sag Harbor and Havens there. And it's really been one of our banner restoration sites for eelgrass. So it's proven to be very successful. It's an area that we have designated as a site whenever we have grant funding. We like to include that in our network to keep it going. And this year happened to be a year that we didn't have grant funds lined up. So some community members and interesting, interested people had said, well, what's it going to take for you to continue to do the work off of Sag Harbor? And we said, you know, funding and support. So with that, that kind of kicked off a fundraising campaign that we ran throughout the summer. And it has successfully yielded, you know, enough funds for us to do in eelgrass planting last fall, which I'll get into in a minute. And then also have the funds in place that's going to allow us to take the next step here. And again, this is the first step in that process of trying to establish a site for an oyster reef. And again, have that money to do more programmatic stewardship sessions and these workshops to really get the community involved. So we can go to the next one, please. So eelgrass restoration, as hopefully you're aware, eelgrass really is a central underwater habitat to a lot of our commercially and recreationally important finfish and shellfish. We see our base scallops there. That's a whole nother story and something we're working on with Cornell as well in terms of trying to do some research and continue our restoration efforts. To keep that population moving along, so we don't lose it entirely. But anyway, eelgrass specifically, it's a big part of the puzzle because it really is a preferred habitat for that specific species. So it's really great for habitat value, but also in the wake of climate change and water quality issues. It's a really great fixer of nutrients, specifically on carbon. You might have heard the term blue carbon. And eelgrass meadows are actually more effective at binding carbon and getting that out of our water system than, you know, some terrestrial forests are. So again, we love eelgrass, we want to see it come back. We've lost a lot of populations through the years. But we've really found that in areas that we do the right site suitability, you know, modeling to determine if its restoration is going to work. And we have that commitment to do it year after year. We're seeing restoration success. And the site off of Sag Harbor is one of those sites, so we hope to continue working there. So we can work on the next one. So as I mentioned, last time we were here, we were getting permission to hold one of our marine meadows workshop at Havens Beach. So thank you so much again for the support and allowing us to host our workshop there. You were there, Mr. Mayor, and some folks in our audience as well. It was a terrible, terrible day, but we had over fifty participants come out and help us assemble these eelgrass planting units. That our team then dove, and you can see that's actually footage from the planting site that we worked at. So you could see, you know, all that beautiful green. There's, there's a big current happening, so it's kind of laying down a little bit. But, you know, these areas that we're able to plant, it looks just like a barren desert when we start. And then by the time we leave, there's a beautiful meadow there.
That's an actual picture of the harbor of Havens Beach.
That was taken in November, so two weeks after we had that workshop, we had everything in the water and it's serving its function already. We, when we're down there, we see immediate, you know, habitat utilization, different fish coming in and checking it out and seeing what's going on. So it's really gratifying underwater gardening, if you will. But yeah, so it's, it's working and we want to keep extending that. So next up, I think we have our, our coastal habitat restoration. So just last weekend, actually, our habitat restoration team was out at Long Beach for, I think, our fourth consecutive annual planting. That we've been doing there to, again, try to bolster some of the shoreline there, keep some of that sand on the beach and out of the parking lot. So we've been working in partnership with Noiak Civic and with the Southampton Parks Department on that effort. So we want to continue doing things like that and working with the board to identify possible other areas within the village that might be suitable locations. That would benefit from, from such plantings from a coastal resiliency and also habitat value type planting. But Long Beach for now has been where we've been planting for the past few seasons. We can look at the next one. And spat on shell oyster reefs. So this is another, you know, exciting restoration methodology that we've been working on for years and years and years. So we have a large hatchery up at our South Fork facility right across the bay. Where we spawn, you know, millions of shellfish each year for these purposes. And Kate, who's our aquaculture coordinator, heads up all the different efforts that we're doing. And could talk a little bit more about what we're hoping to do here in Sag Harbor now.
Are you aware of that? We've, we've approved the South Fork farmers to put that reef out there?
No harm in getting more waste.
Absolutely.
We've been in coordination with them. Our site is different from that.
Okay.
Yep.
But do you, do you guys work together at all? That was one of my questions.
We reached out to them, so yeah.
Everybody knows what each other's doing. Perfect, perfect.
So yeah, I'm the aquaculture coordinator and I kind of serve as a bridge between the hatchery team and our Back to the Base efforts. And as part of our stewardship sites, we try to incorporate these restoration or creation of these spat on shell oyster reefs for habitat. You know, they're similar to coral reefs, just not as colorful, I like to say, as well as water quality improvement and erosion control. It's all part of this living shoreline network, you know. Kim Manzo, who's our Back to the Base Habitat Team member, we work very closely because we, it's all about species diversity. We try to do all the things we can, all the restoration activities we can, concentrated in these areas for greater impact. So yeah, we have a robot shell recycling program. We take the shells from restaurants and participating businesses. And we create these, the ideal environment for setting oyster larvae. For having them permanently adhere to these recycled shell. And as they grow, you can see that's a perfect example of a nice little cluster, less, less than a year old.
Are our restaurants in Sag Harbor aware of this program? Are they participating or?
Are limited by who can help me collect shells, so.
So if we found a volunteer for you.
Sure, yeah. And also finding a South Fork shell pile site. You were just talking about this before this meeting, so.
Where they could just bring the shells and.
Yeah, so last year, two thousand and twenty three, our new, our newest stewardship site was Shelter Island. I live on Shelter Island, so it made it a little bit easier. We partnered with Sylvester Manor Educational Farm. And they gave us a portion of their back armed tree, this shell pile, shell recycling pile. It's difficult to get on and off the island to grab buckets of shell. We do have some South Fork restaurants that participate, and, you know, they'd love to be able to do more, but it's, that's kind of a restricting factor, so. We want to help with that.
How much room is that?
Not that, not much, yeah. I was not prepared to present about the shell recycling program. I would be happy to come back and talk about that.
Please do.
Yeah, okay. So yeah, so we can go to the next slide. So where, where would we possibly put a spat on shell oyster reef? I personally would love to see it off the John Steinbeck Waterfront Park. I'm not, we would need to talk about the usage, you know, we don't want to, just like on Shelter Island or with any of our sites. We've worked with Bayman, for example, of not wanting to negatively affect their activity. So we wouldn't want to negatively affect your plans for, for the shoreline off the park. But we have a really positive relationship with our contacts at the D C. Who review and approve our firm applications or all the firm applications. And they, just before I got too excited about this possible site, we like asked them, like, is, like, should I rein in my excitement? And they said they loved the idea of somewhere in Sag Harbor, both not just for the water quality improvement. But also the fact that we're seeing a really positive relationship between our stewardship site reef locations. And where we have spat members, or spat program. Is where people can, you know, learn, they're taught to grow their own oysters. And if they have waterfront access away from our main spat program locations in South Fork and Southampton, they can have their own. And if they have waterfront access um, away from our main spat program locations in South Old and Southampton, um, they can have their own bags of oysters when finding that we think they're spawning. And if there's appropriate uh, substrate for that, the larvae to set, there's greater larval retention and therefore greater increase in oyster populations within that small embayment. So by creating an oyster reef in Sag Harbor Cove where there's already spat members, it could be double the positive influence of what we're saying.
So, so would Havens Beach be an option or not really?
Not, not really. We, we floated that and they, I can't actually remember.
Not deep enough or?
Those, uh, the issues with Haven's beach, oh, state, state waters.
Yeah, and they prefer to permit things in waters that are open for shellfish harvest. So if you look on those D E C show, like anything that's in the red, we haven't really seen them be approving permits for. So this was in the blue, everything in the coves.
So it's fairly open. They are, they love that, you know, um.
I don't think we have any other than that, that po- possible uh, dock, right, that was going out? That's the only real plans that I see for the Steinbeck waterfront. So that could be, that could be a, a, a site. Yeah.
That's great. So we'd love to work with you on that because another aspect of why the site is so perfect is the accessibility. Um, you know, again, with Shelter Island, I'm going to reference that a lot because we just wrapped that up. Um, we had a number of deployments of spat, of the spat on shell and we had such incredible community engagement. Because where the site was located at Apple's Harbor was right near a public boat access area. It was easy to just walk up. And we had from little, from kids, as you know, young as my son, who's nine, his and his buddies helped to ol- older community members. And they, they, all of them had an uh, a part of the process. They could participate. And that's what gives them, you know, a real connection to the project. And that's literally what the Back to the Bay initiative is about.
And so that's a generational, it gets, right?
Yes, yes.
I, I would just want to make two, two comments about that site. One is, I think frankly, the Post-Sag Committee um, was looking at that as a place for um, to restore the free dock for Sag Harbor.
Right. It was that one dock that went out, right, which was to the, let's say, the east. It was, yeah, it was further, further.
Yeah.
Towards uh, it's pretty close to the existing docks that are there.
And the second is um, the current in that area is pretty tough once you go out a little bit. So I guess my question would be.
Yeah, we would want to, that was another thing that we saw with the Shelter Island site, is it actually quite shallow. You know, oysters are an intertidal species, so they can be exposed periodically. Um, and it seems to, they seem to be thriving in those more shallow areas. So we don't have to have it deep.
And worth noting too, you know, we want to do something on a pilot level this year and that's why, you know, we're not going to put out five million oysters off the bat.
No, we.
See how it does, right?
And small, and.
Small planting and then, and then monitoring, following that. Uh, that's exactly what we did on Shelter Island. We did small planting in twenty twenty-two. I checked it in the spring and I said it's a go. So yeah, and so we have on the next slide, we have some pictures. Uh, so this is examples of the Shelter Island project. Um, that's me and in the middle of Kim and one of our interns. Uh, she's a senior in high school this year. That's me holding up an oyster from our pilot planting. So less than a year. Yeah.
Oh.
Sorry.
This thing.
Yeah.
If, so let me ask you a question. Is there, do you have any outreach to Pearson High School and any students, seniors or students that are looking to get involved in marine biology and you do?
So we have curriculum and that's the beauty of the whole stewardship site model. Once we have that commitment of that community, we work closely with the, you know, regional school districts. We do that on Shelter Island. We do that in Hampton Bay. We do that out in Long Park as well, you know, the main site.
All different age levels from, you know, yeah, upperclassmen who want to get some experience. She reached out. She wanted to confirm that she wanted to go into marine biology, did her internship and yes.
So you have been in con- so you have been in contact with Pearson and they, they?
Not yet about this. We just want to make sure we're, we're looking positive to proceed with this. And then we have curriculum already ready that we've done in other schools. So that would be the next step, you know, as we get closer. Because the timing on this, it's a, you know, summer, it's a fall situation anyway. So it would probably be next fall. It would be implementing the actual curriculum. So it would line up with when the stewardship.
School starts, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. And so then that bottom picture is just one day of our deployment. We ha- I have um, people help count and measure the um, the spat before they're planted. So that when I do do monitoring, I have actual hard data and they are part of that. Great.
Sounds great.
Yeah. So then just kind of an, an overview of next steps. Um, as I mentioned, with um, the funds that we raised so far through our stewardship site campaign, we were able to do that first initial plant or continue our plantings um, for eelgrass. And again, it's, it's looking positive with what we're um, bringing in through donations to be able to assure that we'll be able to do another planting next fall. Um, next steps with the oyster reef, uh, hopefully progress again. This is great to get that feedback of the use of the park and make sure that this would be, you know, make sense for that particular location. We could come up with Plan B and Plan C. But again, we're, we're interested in the cove area because that's in the vicinity of where we're growing um, oysters currently through our spat program annex there. Um, so we typically submit our permits to D E C each year, um, you know, early in the year. So we don't have to decide anything at this meeting, but we do have some examples of the letters that we that include. And I think the other group had, you know, submitted.
Has one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, that too. So that's kind of an example and maybe I could work with Katie and send her some of that if we want to move ahead. There's, you know, certain, you know, jargon that needs to be in there that D E C wants to see. So basically giving us that permission. So again, we've done this in Southampton Town, East Hampton Town, Shelter Island, South Old. So it's, it's been um, pretty standard at this point. Um, in terms of living shoreline, again, that's something we're just hoping this is the start of a conversation of where it might be appropriate within the village to do some more work. If not Long Beach, you know, elsewhere directly in the village. Um, so that's just, you know, out there as well. And let's go next one. And then this is just kind of a general timeline, just to help you out, wrap your head around what we're hoping to do here. So again, early in the year, we're looking at retaining those permits and permissions and then stuff really gets started in our hatchery in terms of getting prepared um, to create all these uh, lovely shellfish for this. Um, and then again, looking into March and June, that's kind of the grow out time. And then May and July, really again, going in there and and refining those sites specifically where we're going to be doing this. So we're, we're then prepared for the end of the summer uh, planting. Um, again, keeping the village updated on everything that we're proposing and working together to to refine these different sites. And then come fall, getting back into marine meadows season again and doing hopefully another workshop that worked out really great to have it at Haven's Beach. So we'd love to do it there or at the park, wherever um, you know, property, you might want to see some community activities happening. Um, and then October and November is usually the time we do shellfish seeding. So we didn't really mention, but part of the campaign, if we do reach our fundraising goal, we want to be able to also seed some hard clams and bay scallops as well. So we would be working, you know, again with the village and the Southampton trustees as well, depending on what the jurisdiction, on what areas we might want to.
I was going to mention that, but if you're working with them already and you've gotten their support, that's good.
Yeah. So this, this site was kind of interesting because Tommy John had, like, we were trying to figure out who has jurisdiction right off of the park. And then I, I've also.
Southampton trustees, yeah.
Committee. Yeah. But they, they said it's actually through the harbor committee. So we, if we're trying to get, if we could get, you know, a hundred percent, if there's, you know, tax, whatever, you know, overlays we can look at to just make sure where we're citing. We're obviously working with the property um, owners, whoever has jurisdiction over those specific areas. That's what we want to see. Um, and then again, ongoing as we, you know, get going with this, working with the community groups, working with the schools and really getting, you know, the whole Back to the Beast concept within the community and and students. And then of course, um, we are doing a wonderful brew for the days with Kids' Squid. Uh, our partnership continues there. So they have very generously um, done this brew for the vase for us using all um, local grains from foster farms. So we're really, really excited about it. Pre-orders are up now and and this Friday, we're actually going to have a nice little collaboration uh, release and um.
I'll have some examples of spat on shell.
Yeah. So Kate and I and some of our other staff will be there um, to talk more about all of this. And again, start getting community, you know, buy-in and feedback as well. So we hope everyone might be able to come down to that too. We also have more information on our website as well. Um, a really great way to just like get connected and follow our Sag Harbor stewardship site page. Because we just post updates about, you know, the progress that we're making. Um, and again, we're closing in on that fundraising goal. And I think uh, with the, the sale of our brew for the days, we'll get there before the end of the year. So we're really excited for twenty twenty.
And I'm sorry, what's the goal, the dollar amount?
So twenty-five thousand dollars was the goal for year one to do this pilot level, um, you know, work. And then the whole idea is to, by this time next year, be assessing what we did. I go after, you know, C P F funds and other grant funds. So again, it's always really good to have this initial, you know, pilot project and data ready to go. So we could then propose, you know, maybe the Southampton Town, you know, C P F to do a bigger scale up of some of these applications too. So this is again, hopefully just the first step in a, a longer term and larger scale effort, but we have to start somewhere. So we're trying to start.
Another thing I'll add, just to really emphasize the fact that we, there's so much potential here for our outreach and relationships with the village is um, I'm not going to divulge too much because it's still in the works. But uh, possible um, educational film programming um, in uh, we're looking at the spring hopefully uh, in coordination with the New York Public Library and Sag Harbor Cinema and Back to the Bay. So.
That sounds interesting. That sounds exciting. Fantastic. Yeah.
So yeah, I think that was the last one. Yeah. So then that's just our contact information for any, you know, direct questions related to any of the specific restoration methodologies we kind of um, presented on. And again, just we will keep you updated on all the general um, updates as we close in on our um, fundraising goals. And we thank you and.
Thank you.
Very exciting.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I just want to say you certainly have my support a hundred percent. And anything that we can do, I think, as far as preparing documents for you to, to continue your work, you have our support, I would say.
We appreciate that. So yeah, so we'll, we'll follow up.
Yeah, so let's follow up.
Letters of the sites and.
I'd also like to get, if we can, post on our website, um, connect to, to anybody who, who tracks our website to your site where they can become a member and donate. So we can possibly raise some more. Can we do that? We can't do that. And they wonder why I hate lawyers, but whatever.
Interacted to the part of our website that gives them more information about what we're trying to do.
And you do have the East Hampton Star and Sag Harbor Express here. I'm sure that they're going to finally feature you.
Yeah, they're here. I'm sure they'll have websites.
What, your ads in the paper are great. Yeah. I gotta tell you.
Yes, yes. I'm busy and just wrapped up celebration. So maybe we could bring one down to Sag Harbor.
That sounds nice. Thank you again. Thank you so much. So that brings us to uh, the last discussion item, which is the Affordable Housing Planning Study. Is there anything that we want to add from last month or?
Nothing to add. Just wondering if there's any public comment tonight, other than there's um, a workshop that's being scheduled as well, that's been scheduled?
Correct. The flyer is on the table there. It is Monday, December eighteenth at five thirty P M. Up here, it'll also be available on Zoom.
Thank you. So without any comments on that, Anthony? Anthony?
Quick, that's a question. Uh, I wouldn't have known about this unless I had come here today to see the fire. So maybe hang the fire on the front door of the uh, this building or something like that, just so, you know.
Sure. And you want to take some copies and hand them out to whoever you?
We, we'll definitely post it.
Now, good, good idea, Anthony.
Yes, thank you. Any other comments on the Affordable Housing, Affordable Housing Planning Study? Okay. So that brings us to action items. And the first uh, action item is a resolution, December twenty twenty-three, to adopt the Pro-Housing Communities Pledge. This is uh, something that I was informed about. I had a meeting up in Hicksville with the Commissioner of New York State Homes and Community Renewal, Ruth Ann Beznakas, who uh, gave me information on an executive order that the governor had passed, Executive Order Number Thirty, which created this pledge, this Pro-Housing Communities Pledge, which allows us to get grants and funding for, it's for local communities that are active in creating housing. So we'll be able to, to access uh, the, this area to get grants from the state. So can I have a motion to adopt? Yes?
Uh, move.
Motion by trustee Kane, seconded by trustee Plum. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Uh, resolution, December twenty twenty-three, authorizing addendum, restatement of lease agreement with Breakwater Yacht Club. So this does not, this is not with the law. This is just the dock. Does it have a motion on that?
So moved.
Motion by trustee Kane, second.
Second.
Seconded by deputy mayor Haley. Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Resolution, December twenty twenty-three, setting rental registry fee. As we just adopted, right? Or the local law, right? Motion by trustee Plum, second.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Kane. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Resolution, December twenty twenty-three, authorizing Mayor Gardella to sign a master services agreement with Universe Incorporated.
This would be our new sewer water billing um, company that we'll be going with.
Have a motion?
I'll move it.
Motion, deputy mayor Hay, second. Seconded by trustee Plum. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Resolution, December twenty twenty-three, to award bid of the two thousand four Steiger boat. We finally got somebody to bid on that.
So moved.
Again, second.
Motion by trustee Kane, seconded by deputy, deputy mayor Hay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Resolution, December twenty twenty-three, to dissolve the sewer committee.
I'll move it.
Motion, deputy mayor Hay.
I'll second it.
Seconded by trustee Kane. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Resolution, twenty twenty-three, December twenty twenty-three, excuse me, to dissolve the park advisory committee.
I'll move it.
Motion by deputy mayor Hay, second.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Kane. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Resolution, December twenty twenty-three, to dissolve the waterfront planning and zoning committee.
I'll move it.
Motion by deputy mayor Hay, second.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Kane. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Authorization to accept twenty twenty-three bank reconciliations and collateral reports for October twenty twenty-three. Motion?
So moved.
Motion by trustee Kane, a second. Seconded by trustee Plum. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Kate LaCassio, clerk administrator, requests permission to attend N I COM twenty twenty-four Village Elections Workshop on January eleventh, twenty twenty-four in Hop Hog, New York. Have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by trustee Kane, second.
Second.
Seconded by deputy mayor Hay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Authorization to accept the resignation of traffic control officer Javier Jemot, effective November thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
I'll move it.
Motion by deputy mayor Hay, second. Seconded by trustee Plum. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Carrie Garapi, Secretary of the Sag Harbor Volunteer Ambulance Corps Incorporated, requests authorization to hire Kevin Gillan and David P. Mangia Melly at the hourly rate of twenty-seven dollars.
I'll move it.
Motion by deputy mayor Hay.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Kane. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Carrie Garapi, Secretary of the Sag Harbor Volunteer Ambulance Corps Incorporated, requests authorization to hire the following paramedics at the hourly rate of thirty-seven dollars. Christopher J. Van Hooten, Robert Rosen, and Ziad Farukh. I need a motion.
I'll move it.
Motion by deputy mayor Hay, second.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Kane. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carry. Carrie Garapi, Secretary of the Ambulance, Volunteer Ambulance Corps, Sag Harbor, requests authorization to accept the removal of member Jennifer D. Patoro and remove her from the insurance roll. Have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by trustee Kane, second. Seconded by trustee Plum. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Now moves us to the approval of the bills. I need a motion to approve uh, payments presented in warrant number twenty-seven in the amount of six hundred ten thousand, seven hundred fifty-three dollars and eighty-eight cents. A motion to approve the payments presented in warrant number twenty-eight in the amount of two hundred and sixteen thousand, thirty-nine dollars and seventy-eight cents. Motion to approve the payments presented in warrant number twenty-nine in the amount of two thousand, seven hundred ninety-one dollars and twenty-five cents. Motion to approve the payments presented in warrant number thirty in the amount of three thousand dollars. And finally, a motion to approve the payments presented in warrant number thirty-one in the amount of one million, twenty-four thousand, three hundred and eleven dollars and seventeen. Finally, a motion to approve the payments presented in warrant number thirty-one in the amount of one million twenty-four thousand three hundred and eleven dollars and seventeen cents. Do I have a motion to pay all those warrants? Motion by trustee Plum, a second.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Kane, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. That now gets us to the public comment section, fifteen minutes, public session, input for comments and questions, three minutes per speaker. Any public comments? Okay, that moves us to motion to adjourn.
I'll move it.
Motion by deputy mayor Hay, second.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Kane, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? I didn't think so. We are now adjourned.